I call the December 13th, 2023 Planning Commission meeting to order at 6:01 PM. Ms. Pinyard, please call roll.
Chair Rob Hererline.
Here.
Nicole Hendricks.
Here.
Andrew Carr.
Here.
Cameron Mesba.
Catherine Neal.
Here.
Jennifer Willard.
Here.
Thank you.
Thank you. Now, please rise for the Pledge of Allegiance.
Allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay. Now, moving on to citizens' input. This is the time that citizens have the opportunity to address the Planning Commission regarding any item that is not already scheduled for a formal public hearing tonight. Therefore, if any member of the audience either here in City Hall or via Zoom would like to speak about any work session item or any other matter of concern, please raise your hand or send a message to the recorder using the Zoom chat function so that we may hear from you now.
I have no hands raised on Zoom.
All right. Thank you. Okay, moving on to the administrative matters. The October 11th, 2023 Planning Commission minutes were previously distributed. Are there any corrections to the minutes?
None.
All right. Hearing none. The minutes are approved as distributed. All right. And the next one is a public hearing, so I have to read the legislative hearing procedure. All right. Members before the Planning Commission involve legislative public hearings. These are somewhat different than the quasi-judicial hearings conducted by the city's Development Review Board. The Planning Commission would like to hear from anyone who has testimony to offer that is relevant to the issues before the Planning Commission. If you wish to testify tonight, you need to complete a testimony card. For those who are here in person, please complete a testimony card located at the side of the room and hand it to the recorder. For members of the public participating remotely with the Zoom meeting platform, digital testimony cards are already filed with the recorder, but we ask that you please indicate now or after the presentation a desire to testify by sending a message to the recorder at City Hall using the Zoom chat function. For those people joining the meeting by phone only, you will be unmuted after the staff presentation and asked one at a time if you wish to testify. If you have not previously submitted a digital testimony card, please request one now using the Zoom chat function. Please note that testimony may also be submitted by email during the hearing by emailing the following email address: planning@ci.wilsonville.or.us. Then please confirm with the recorder through the Zoom chat option that you emailed your comments. Your email will then be read into the record. Remain in the meeting until the comments are received and read aloud. Written comment or testimony received after the public hearing has closed cannot be considered. Because your testimony gives you legal standing in the matter for which you are testifying, it is important that you provide your full name and address at the beginning of your comments, or if you prefer not to state your address aloud in the public forum, state that your address is as provided on the testimony card you submitted and make your statement. When your name is called to testify, if you are present in council chambers, please come forward to the podium and speak clearly into the microphone for the record. If you are participating in the meeting remotely using the Zoom phone or web platform, please wait to be unmuted by the recorder before stating your name and comments for the record. When you testify, please address your comments to the findings criteria outlined in the staff report and applicable regulations that city staff cite at the start of the hearing. Some of the issues that come before the Planning Commission are fairly complicated. For that reason, we especially appreciate any specific recommendations or suggestions that you may have. We will ask you to avoid redundant testimony. If you agree with testimony that has already been given, just tell us that. If we have a large number of people interested in testifying, we will limit the time allotted to each member of the public to three minutes. At the end of your testimony, members of the commission may have questions for you. Thank you for taking the time to participate in the hearing tonight and help us deal with these issues. Awesome. Okay. Resolution number LP 22-0001, a resolution of the City of Wilsonville Planning Commission recommending the Wilsonville City Council adopt an update to the wastewater treatment master plan. I declare the public hearing open at 6:06 PM. Staff, will you please present the staff reports?
I'm the project manager for the wastewater treatment plant master plan. I have online consultant Dave Price with Corolla Engineers. He's available to talk about more technical issues and answer questions as needed. And the presentation will largely be a recap of information I've previously presented, but it will include a little more detail on the selection of the membrane treatment technology that was presented at the last work session and some more of the details into why that technology has been selected. Again, this master plan is driven largely by the need to accommodate expected growth between now and the year 2045, which is projected to be the build-out time for the city and all the reserve areas that are planned for growth, you know, eventual annexation to the city. So we looked at those growth projections as well as existing industrial dischargers who have permits with the city that are not currently discharging to their maximum allowed amount. We looked at what the impact would be of increasing those discharges to the amounts allowed by their permits. And then, oops, in order to accommodate the additional flows and loads of the treatment plant, we conducted hydraulic modeling to identify any hydraulic deficiencies that would need to be upgraded. We looked at aging equipment, just that would have to get replaced because of its, you know, end of its useful life, as well as seismic retrofits for resiliency. And then, all those projects were estimated for the cost and then scheduled according to when they would be needed based on the growth. And the growth scenarios that we looked at were consistent with the recent master planning efforts that we've done. Most, you know, pertinent to this study was the wastewater collection system master plan, which was completed in about 2014, with one modification to that was the Salt Creek Concept Plan, which identified the far north area of that previous study area as being served by the city of Twalton in the future. So that was taken off. And that's just the slight change here you see toward the end of the planning period. And here you can see the projection estimates between now and 2045, and it's roughly a doubling of population, an average of just under 3% per year growth. And here is the map of the city and the surrounding reserve areas that would eventually be served, as well as the land use assumptions for those areas. And here is just a table, again, summarizing current flows and loads to the treatment plant, the capacity at the plant, what it can handle, and then what we're projecting at the end of the growth period. So again, most of these numbers from the first column here to the last column, these numbers are almost all basically doubling. And so you can see they're all exceeding capacity at some point in the planning period. And this slide just gives a graphic overview of the treatment plant site and really illustrates the physical constraints we have to try to expand the footprint, because we're surrounded by existing development to the north. We have park property on the west and the south, and then ODOT land to the east. We really, we don't have room to branch out. So that poses a particular challenge to how we're going to accommodate so much growth. And so, as I mentioned in previous presentations, the most viable, and really the only viable, technology to handle that level of growth in this limited space is membrane bioreactors. And I'm gonna let Dave go through some of the details of the different, you know, intensification technologies that were looked at. These are all kind of advanced methods of treatment that go beyond conventional processes. But again, there was limitations to the others that we looked at. So I'm gonna let Dave run through those.
Sure. Thanks, Mike. So each of the processes that were considered are, you know, intensification technologies, meaning that they would require less footprint, less space. So you'll see under the alternatives here and advantages, you've got process alternatives that are space efficient. Generally, they produce high-quality effluent. And there are some other important advantages related to the membrane technology that was selected. One of those is that essentially with a membrane facility, you're putting in these membranes which are going to basically replace the tertiary filters that are out at the plant eventually, or in part. Whereas with the other two alternatives, you need to continue to think about how you are going to filter that effluent before it's discharged to the river. Each of these obviously has some challenges. And we looked at all of these as we considered the alternatives when we made our selection. And membranes are a fairly expensive technology. They do require some additional process upfront to protect those membranes, which are valuable. And you need to, you don't want to get those damaged or fouled. So you've got fine screens that go in. And there are some power and chemical costs associated with membranes that are not associated with the other alternatives. However, the IFAS process at the bottom there really won't quite provide sufficient capacity for what the projected flows and loads are at the 2045 conditions. And there would need to be some significant modifications to the existing structures out there. And there were some, similarly, there were some challenges and potential disqualifiers, I guess, for the biomag process, in particular, some concern with the magnetite that's used to help enhance the settling of the solids, which is a major feature of that alternative and that process. There is, you know, metal and iron that is involved in that process. And there are some concerns with the solids handling and drying equipment that you have out there on the site. We didn't have any examples of this process being utilized for the size of a facility that's a municipal facility. There were some examples that we saw for industrial kind of mining operations, and there were some reports there of some concerns with the solids smoldering. So suffice it to say that our evaluation concluded that membrane technology is the best application for the city's needs at this time. And that's what you see carried forward in the master plan for the wastewater treatment plant.
So that's, you know, going into some detail on the selection of the membrane technology, but just kind of moving back now to the overall capital improvement plan and the recommendations. We have secondary process expansion, which includes the membrane technology, but also expansion of the existing aeration basins and adding additional blowers. And that would happen before we implement the membrane technology. So that'd be the first phase of the expansion. And then ultimately, as flows increase, we will have to add a cooling tower for temperature, to meet temperature limits, as well as due to just increased flows, there'll be some hydraulic capacity limitations in the UV disinfection system that will be required to be increased. And then, besides the capacity improvements, we have, as I mentioned before, just asset replacement projects. We have a lot of old equipment out there. A lot of it's really obsolete and just not supported by suppliers anymore. We have secondary clarifier mechanisms that just are getting worn out and have to get replaced. We have, similarly, the solids handling equipment, the thickening and dewatering processes, which about, probably in the second half of the planning period are going to be due for replacement. Then, the UV disinfection system, right now, we have one unit out there that was installed in 1997 that is definitely obsolete and near failure that needs to get replaced. And then, the one that's currently, the newest one, that was installed in 2014, you know, by the end of the planning period, that will also have to get replaced. And the solids dryer is going to be near the end of its useful life, and we're going to be adding another dryer. Not, well, we'll keep the old one just kind of as a backup unit, but we will need to have a new one that's in better condition and more reliable. But having a second one on hand will, you know, give us redundancy for But having a second one on hand will, you know, give us redundancy for cases of, you know, outages or maintenance requirements. And then again, there's seismic retrofits to several of the existing structures just to withstand the seismic event that's identified in the Oregon resilience plan. In addition to the structural improvements, there's ground improvements also been identified that will just help to stabilize these structures and minimize the ground shift and settlement that could occur. And so this map kind of identifies those different projects, and they're kind of color-coded. The blue ones here are all the capacity improvements. So we've got the new aeration basin here. We've got the fine screens, the new, the blowers that would have to go in along with the aeration basin. And then right in the middle here is where the membrane bioreactors would go. And then a new cooling tower here to handle the temperature limits as the flows increase. And the purple ones are essentially the ONM, the asset replacement projects where just, yeah, replacing old and worn-out equipment. And then the green boxes here are the structural improvements for the seismic resilience of existing structures. And then the city has also identified plans to eventually bring fiber optic cable out to the site. So we show a project to at least bring that conduit up to the property line so that it'll be available for when that fiber is brought to the site. And Corolla did develop this capacity trigger plot that, it's kind of complicated, but it shows the flows and loads and when those limits are reached, you know, which project would be needed. And what this allows us to do is to track how flows and loads actually increase over time and whether, you know, these curves are true or if they, you know, the growth rates are different, we can shift these projects accordingly. So we'll be able to just, you know, keep track with real-life data of where we are and adjust the timing of these projects as, you know, as the data would indicate. And here's just a table of the major projects that were identified and the timeframe for implementing them. And in the near term, we've got, you know, several projects that total up to probably about $17 million. Then, you know, the big one is that first MBR project. And then we get into some of the equipment replacement toward the end of the planning period. And then we're looking at the, some of the hydraulic upgrades toward the end here and the final phase of the membranes. And those are highlighted in red just because, you know, as growth occurs and as technology improves, you know, we'll have to revisit over the, you know, between now and then as to whether these projects are going to be needed. Based on the projections that we've made, we will have to do these improvements, but again, we'll track actual flows and loads and see if, you know, by that time, if those projects are still needed. And this just kind of indicates the cash flow to fund these projects. And again, the big spike here, that's the first membrane bioreactor project in about the year 2030. And, you know, all the other projects that are part of the plan are plotted out here. And, you know, the next, the very next step in this process after, you know, adopting this plan would be to complete the rate and SDC study, which would figure out in detail how to finance these projects. So that's kind of what we're showing here is our next steps. After presenting to city council, we would move right into doing that rate and SDC study to figure out the details of the financing. So with that, can take any questions from me or Dave?
I just have one comment. And this can be handled during the detailed design when these projects are triggered. But I would encourage the city to look at dense packing any new structures so that way we do have some incremental space to expand beyond the planning horizon. If we, the way it's depicted now, it's, there's a lot of access routes around each of the structures. I don't know that that's required by code. So it's just something to think about when you get into the detailed design.
Yeah, we do have to leave a certain amount of space around each structure in order to get to it for long-term maintenance. But, yeah, one of the nice things about the membrane process is that it can be expanded incrementally. And I believe, Dave, you can correct me if I'm wrong on this, but the membrane, the final phase of that membrane improvement project would likely leave us some cushion for additional growth if that, if we're to exceed our current projections.
That's correct, Mike. And what you said about access is true. Some of these facilities are going to have equipment in them that are going to require boom trucks or maybe cranes if there's maintenance required and so. But absolutely understand and message received in terms of, you know, trying to maximize available space.
Thank you.
I got a couple. On the, you mentioned the technology advances. So how often do you see technology advances in this area? And what's the cost difference between the new and the old?
Well, Dave can speak into more detail on this, but my understanding is with membranes in particular, those are always getting improved where they can handle more loading on them. So that's why there's a possibility that, you know, that final phase of membrane installation may not be needed. If between now and then, the membrane capacity, the cartridges that are being installed in that building can handle more, you know, that'll reduce costs by having to put fewer of them in. But, you know, Dave can talk to maybe more about how the technology has evolved up until this point.
Sure. You know, just kind of focusing on the membranes, but there are any number of technologies out there at the site that, you know, 20 years ago, when I really started my career as a consultant, some of these things were like, you know, really new and exciting things like UV disinfection and membrane technology. And now these things are rather routinely employed. I believe, and I'm not the membrane expert on the team, but I believe that when we started looking at membranes a couple of years ago, we had one sort of footprint layout for what it was going to take with the membranes at that time. And literally within that time period, vendors had brought forward, you know, just, you know, in the last four months or so, as we were finalizing costs, we were able to essentially identify membrane units that have a higher fluctrate, which is basically the amount of water that you can pass through each one of those units. And I don't know that I have a rule of thumb that, you know, how quickly that changes, but certainly there, you know, if you think about 20 years ago and then 20 years into the future, there's a lot of motivation on the part of the vendors that supply this equipment, and they're constantly trying to out-compete one another. And there's sort of no telling exactly where this might go.
Okay. What's the, any idea or thoughts on incremental costs between like old and new? I mean, is it, because we have $70 million, is it going to be in 10 years, is that going to be 120? Or is the technology only going to go up, you know, as the technology of these membranes increases by plan, does the cost not go up as much as the membrane's functionality?
Well, it depends on what the process application is. But in the membrane world, what I would expect is that the cost of units is not going to ever be something that's going to go down. I could be proven wrong about that. But what you will find is that you may have need for, say, a smaller number of units than you needed previously because the capacity has increased because the technology has gotten that much better. Hopefully that answers your question.
Yeah. Yeah. How often do we reevaluate this plan? Is it every?
Well, I, you know, may defer to Zach here in the room, but I think the plan would probably be every five years or so we would visit.
Ten years.
Every 10 years. So, yeah, that's, you know, we have to revisit growth assumptions, regulatory changes. All those things are changing, so.
Constantly. And then I was reading in the report, they were comparing the collection system master plan to this plan, and there was some substantial differences between them that was discussed with city council, and we decided to go with the lower assumption that was in this plan as compared to the collection system. What happens if the collection system plan is more accurate for industrial inflows?
Okay. Dave, I might have to ask you on that one, but.
Sure, I can jump in. So what we looked at when we were considering what to do with the treatment plant, and I'll just kind of preface this by saying that when you lay out a collection system and you plan that, you've got a bunch of linear assets that need to typically go into city or county or state roadways. And nobody wants to undersize those and come back later, dig up the street and put another pipe in. So there's some, something of a sort of fundamental difference in the way that planning is done. At a treatment plant, and this is, this one is a good example, you have opportunity to face improvements as sort of as you need them. So that's a fundamental difference. In our observation or evaluation of the actual flows that are coming from the industries that the city has within your service area today, it was our opinion that the estimates that are in the collection system master plan are very conservative and there's, it will be dependent upon what the industries are and if the city is able to attract in the future. So there's a possibility that there is going to be a high water use industry that wants to locate into Wilsonville. And the thing for the city to do in that case is to sort of stop and take stock of what that might mean relative to the assumptions that have been made here in the wastewater treatment plant master plan and decide whether or not maybe that has an impact on the recommendations here. And that's not an uncommon thing. I've worked with, you know, many different agencies over the years, some of whom have had, you know, desires to attract, I don't know, food processors that would, you know, generate high quantities of waste. And that has a significant impact on treatment facilities. More typically what happens is we'll see that industries will locate in service areas where they maybe are not going to hit those sort of worst-case scenario kind of estimates that you see in a collection system master plan. And rather than having you overbuild facilities at the wastewater treatment plant that you may never need, we're always recommending that you face things. And as Mike is showing here, you keep track of what's actually happening with the flows and loads that are coming into the plant.
Yeah, what's helpful about this plot here is that it, you know, the years are just are kind of estimates is when we think these flows and loads will occur. But again, if they occur at a different rate, you know, then the projects can be moved based on the actual flows and loads and not just, you know, when we're guessing or anticipating that they'll happen. We can, we can track real-life data and shift as needed.
Okay. Thank you.
Well, first, thank you. There's clearly a lot of work. It's very thorough. I was reading through, I was learning a lot. There's stuff I still don't understand, but I really appreciate all the work. And I had one question just about the regulatory requirements with like DEQ and the permits. And looking at that project cost sheet that was on the PowerPoint, how are those, how do those correlate? So I think in the report, it said like in July of 2025, we, our permit ends and like we have to kind of maybe, I don't know if we reassess or what that looks like, but how does, yeah, how does those regulatory changes impact like that project cost sheet?
Well, I mean.
Or I guess the timeframes too.
Barring any surprises, I mean, in the regulatory world, I think, you know, we've got a pretty good handle on what to expect. And then with the bio, the membrane bioreactor technology, we're really well situated to handle if we get like new nutrient limits that we don't currently have. You know, it's a technology that really can target just about any pollutant that we might be regulated for. So, but if, you know, if somehow our permit limits were drastically like reduced, you know, to what, you know, we would expect, I mean, that would just most likely, again, shift some of these projects forward because these, the capacity limits here are based on, you know, what we believe we can legally and safely discharge. But if, you know, if those rules change, then again, that's, that's just going to move these projects, I think.
Okay.
Closer in time is, you know, if they get more strict than we're anticipating.
Okay. Thank you.
How long of a time do we know about upcoming regulatory changes?
Do we know about them ahead of time before they actually hit the books? Or how much time do they normally give us to react?
Well, Dave, do you want to comment on sort of the process DEQ uses when they announce, you know, permit, new permit limits?
Yeah, I mean, there's, it's a complicated answer in Oregon because DEQ has been sort of behind a curve in terms of getting people's permits updated. The city has actually been in the position of having their permit updated relatively recently compared to some discharges. So I would kind of qualify things along those lines. But it's understood that there are certain things that DEQ has been looking at for a number of years, things that they have considered for regulation and those things that Mike mentioned, nutrients, things like nitrogen and phosphorus in your effluent. The assumption that we have made in putting the plan together is that at some point that may be a likelihood. And so there is some capacity that's needed in order to do that nutrient removal, and that's been accounted for. And that's, that's one reason that the membrane process was selected because we knew that you'd have a lot more flexibility and be able to adapt to those kinds of changes. One of the other things that folks will see in that document is the temperature limitations for effluent discharge to the river. That's another important thing for the city to sort of be keeping an eye on as things seem to be getting warmer and just in general. But those sorts of things are typically put out there for public consumption and consideration when DEQ is thinking about regulating something. And I understand that Mike and others listening on. And I understand that Mike and others listen in on some Association of Clean Water Agency meetings that involve your neighboring agencies throughout the state. So people are keeping their ear to the ground.
Just last question, and you've got the trigger plot on here, so that's, that'll be my question. So you've got the triggers identified here for 2027 projected population, 31, 36, et cetera. Are those the triggers for when the new systems need to be online or when the work needs to start to bring the systems online?
That trigger, the triggers that are on this plot are for when it's expected that the equipment or the facilities need to be in place.
Okay.
So that there's going to need to be, and you should, if you were to look at this and compare it to that cash flow projection, you should be seeing some cash being expended prior to the date that's shown on this trigger plot.
Okay. Thank you. Appreciate that. All right. Thank you, staff. All right, let me. All right. Now I get to call for public testimony. All members of the public on the call will be unmuted if they wish to testify. If you wish to testify, please raise your hand or send a message to the recorder using the Zoom chat function so that we may hear from you now. If you emailed comment, please state that for the record, and staff will read those comments into the record.
I have no hands raised on Zoom.
Okay. I can skip the rest of those then. Okay.
I think you may, Chair, just ask if anyone in the audience wants to comment on this matter.
Card fine. Is there anybody in the audience that would like to comment on this public hearing? Seeing none. Thank you. All right, now, I'll call the public hearing closed at 6:41 PM. Is there any additional discussion by the commissioners that needs to be had? All right. So I need a motion. Or I can make the motion.
I can. I move to adopt resolution LP 22-0001.
Second.
All right. Oh, it says that I need to ask each commissioner to comment or state their position on the matter before then.
I think you can just ask if there's any discuss, if there's any discussion on the motion.
Cool. Okay. Anybody want to discuss the motion? Going, going, gone. All right. Next, we need to vote. Go for it, Paula.
Catherine Neal. Excuse me. Catherine Neal. We're voting.
Aye.
Jennifer Willard.
Yes.
Cameron Mespa.
Yes.
Andrew Carr.
In favor.
Nicole Hendricks.
Yes.
Chair Heberlin.
Yes.
Vote is unanimous.
Thank you. All right. Dave, Mike, thank you very much. I appreciate the presentation and all your effort on this.
Thank you.
Okay. Next agenda item, moving on to the work sessions. Looks like first up on the agenda is the Coffee Creek assessment.
Let's see here. I have to do share screen first, right?
Only if you want us to see something. We can just chat if you want to. That works.
Each one's a little bit different. Let's see here. So. I think so. Oh, whoops. Does that, oh. All right. Hold on here. I might need some assistance with this one. Okay, what do I do?
Oh, you have it open?
Yes, I have it open.
Okay. Then you just share, then you share your screen.
And then I go share screen. Okay. And then I pick it. All right. Slideshow. From the beginning. There we go. I'll wait for him to come back. Okay. So, good evening, Chair and Commissioners. My name is Cindy Luxhoy, Associate Planner, and at tonight's meeting, I'm providing an update on the status of the Coffee Creek Industrial Design Overlay District Form-Based Code Assessment, as well as seeking input on possible modifications to the Form-Based Code standards. Earlier this year, staff reviewed the timeline to land use approval for the four completed development projects in Coffee Creek and types of requested waivers to the Form-Based Code. In July, staff conducted three focused discussions with applicants and their consultant teams to gain feedback from a customer service standpoint about the Form-Based Code. And we also engaged in September in a follow-up discussion with one of the applicants to understand in more depth which of the Form-Based Code standards could more easily align with current and future needs of prospective industrial users in the Coffee Creek area. Based on this work, staff determined that modification to the land use review tracks and process is not needed. However, slight modifications to the Form-Based Code standards are needed to make compliance more achievable for applicants, with the objective of enabling them to use the Class Two Administrative Review Track while not compromising the city's ability to continue creating a connected, high-quality employment center in Coffee Creek. Staff provided examples of possible modifications and sought input from Planning Commission and City Council at work sessions in September. And staff has since refined those modifications, and tonight's meeting is seeking input on the six Form-Based Code standards, five of which had two or more waiver requests, to which modifications are warranted. The standards are listed on this slide, and specific modifications, as well as the rationale for the proposed changes, are discussed in Attachment 1 of the Planning Commission Staff Report. And I am going to go into more detail about each of those proposed modifications on subsequent slides. With respect to Table CC-3 Site Design Parcel Driveway Width, the current standard is a maximum driveway width of 24 feet, and the 10% allowed adjustment increases the maximum to 26.4 feet. The proposed modification would include two driveway width maximums. It would keep the current standard for the primary driveway that provides access for smaller vehicles such as passenger cars and light delivery trucks. The modification would increase the driveway width to 40 feet maximum with a 10% allowed adjustment to 44 feet for a secondary driveway or a driveway that provides access for larger vehicles such as heavy delivery trucks and semi-tractor trailers. This modification is based on the rationale that while the main goal of the driveway maximum width is limiting the distance that pedestrians have to cross a driveway, thus providing for better pedestrian connectivity, the pedestrian crossing distance need to be, needs to be balanced with safe turning radius for larger trucks to prevent traffic slowdowns and stacking on the street and damage to curbs and landscape areas from turning trucks. The current standard in Table CC-3 Site Design for parcel pedestrian access from the right-of-way of addressing streets, supporting streets, and through connections into a development site is a minimum of eight feet in width. The proposed modification would limit where this access width is required for pathways to the location between the public right-of-way and the primary building entrance or entrances when, for example, a building has two office end caps and therefore two entrances off the addressing street. Other pathways into the site that don't connect to the primary building entrance would be a minimum of five feet, which wide, provided they meet all the other requirements of the Development Code related to accessibility. This modification is based on the rationale that it seems overly burdensome to require all connections from the public right-of-way to be eight feet wide, and the highest priority should be connecting the primary frontage to the primary building entrance. With respect to Table CC-3 Site Design, the current standard for parking location and design on the primary building frontage is one double-loaded bay with a maximum of 16 spaces to be used only for short-term visitor and disabled parking. The allowed adjustment increases the maximum to 20 spaces. And this proposed modification would keep the number of spaces unchanged, but eliminate the requirement that all allowed spaces must be located within one double-loaded bay of parking. The modification also would require that 50% of the allowed spaces be designated for short-term visitor and disabled parking only, thus allowing other spaces to be utilized for longer duration or by other users such as employees. This modification is based on the rationale that minimizing the appearance of parking from an addressing street is a key focus of the pattern book, with the intent of providing a human scale to the public realm. Limiting the total number of spaces as per the current standard while allowing flexibility in parking configuration and use continues to achieve that objective. The current standard for grading and retaining walls in Table CC-3 limits retaining wall height to a maximum of 48 inches with a 20% allowed adjustment to 57.6 inches. Retaining walls no longer, retaining walls longer than 50 linear feet must introduce a five-foot minimum horizontal offset to reduce their apparent mass. The proposed modification would keep the maximum height of the current standard for retaining walls that are visible from the adjacent street right-of-way, but for retaining walls that are only visible to users from within a site. The height maximum would increase to 60 inches with a 20% allowed adjustment to 72 inches. The modification also would keep the current standard for wall design that clarify the meaning of horizontal offset by providing explanatory text, graphics, or illustrations, because we all get really confused about what is a horizontal offset. So. And I do want to note that the staff report indicates that the proposed modification would allow a horizontal and/or a vertical offset. But because a vertical offset can result in wall stability issues and lead to water penetration and failure, we've revised the recommendation to keep the standard as it is, but provide that clarifying language. And this modification is based on the rationale that the pattern book emphasizes the intent to minimize site grading to preserve the natural character of a site, stating that contoured slopes are generally preferred to the installation of retaining walls, and that where retaining walls are necessary to support site development, they should be integrated with other site design features, such as stairs, ramps, and planters whenever possible. And it seems reasonable to slightly increase the allowed height of walls that aren't visible from the right-of-way, as well as to provide illustrative examples of the meaning of horizontal offset to provide some design flexibility while still achieving the intent of the standard. With respect to Table CC-4 Building Design, the current standard for the required canopy at the primary building entrance is a vertical clearance of a minimum of 15 feet with a 10% allowed adjustment to 13.5 feet minimum. The proposed modification would increase the allowed adjustment from 10% to 20%, thus permitting a minimum canopy height of 12 feet with the adjustment. In addition, there are other standards such as accessible building entrance, allowing of primary building entrance, and ground floor height that are set at the 15-foot minimum to be complementary to and consistent with that required entry canopy. And the proposed modification would add a footnote to the table at those standards to allow corresponding reduction in the minimum height of these aspects of site design when an applicant elects to use the allowed adjustment to reduce the required canopy height. And the modification is based on the rationale that a canopy height of 10 to 12 feet is the standard storefront dimension, where a height above 12 feet requires a curtain wall system, which is more expensive and likely requires custom fabrication. And in addition, a lower canopy height may allow for better weather protection at the primary entrance and can facilitate interior-exterior integration and line of sight. And modifying the allowed adjustment to 20% results in a minimum canopy height of 12 feet, which provides design flexibility for applicants who prefer to use that standard for storefront dimension. Okay. And then we have, whoops, then we have base design. Okay. Want to go back? Have I go back? Hold on here. There we go. So with base design, the current standard provides three options for design of the base of a building to distinguish it from the body of the building. Option A uses a change in material, texture, color, or finish to create a distinctive appearance in the base. Option B creates a change in surface position to project the base beyond the body of the building by a minimum of an inch and a half. And option C provides landscaping to the low-berm standard. The proposed modification would clarify that any one of these three design options satisfies the requirement by adding a simple and/or after the last word in option A. And this modification is based on the rationale that this was the original intent of the standard, and that having a base that is both visually distinct as required by option A and dimensionally distinct as required by option B is difficult to achieve, particularly when you have a tilt-up concrete construction. And the same distinctive appearance is possible to create with color and texture, and this is equally effective as a dimensional design element. And staff notes that the staff report neglected to discuss this proposed modification, but it is discussed in the attachment. Kind of an oversight on my part. Okay. So feedback from this meeting and from presentation at City Council Work Session on December 18th will guide staff in drafting a package of proposed Development Code amendments that will be presented to Planning Commission for public hearing and recommendation to council in February of 2024, and City Council public hearing and adoption is anticipated in March or April. And so tonight, I am seeking feedback from Planning Commission responding to the questions posed on this slide, and that concludes my presentation. I'm happy to answer questions. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Commissioner Mespa, you want to start us off?
No.
Okay. Well, then.
I have nothing, I have nothing to say. I like the changes. I think they have, you know, when we discussed this, we had concerns about dramatic changes, and I think these, hopefully, they'll work. These modifications are kind of on the edges. I like, I like how judicious staff has been in coming up with them.
I think the changes are great. I don't see any issue with any of them.
Great. I support them as well.
I have one question on the parking. So is this only controlling the parking in the front? If they have additional parking for like employees in the back, this doesn't really apply to it?
Yeah, so this, the limitation, the standard only applies to the parking on an addressing street. Other streets can have parking, you know, like supporting streets and through connections. There can be parking on those. But we wanted to limit the extent of the parking on the addressing street to keep the public realm, you know, more personable.
Perfect. I support these.
Great.
I'm supportive as well. Thank you.
Terrific.
Terrific.
And then there's me. Where do I start? Okay, so I'll make it short mostly. For the next meeting, it would be nice to have an example of a five-foot offset, just that we can see what that would look like in the real world, because I, I'm not sure I know what it actually would look like, so.
We're equally confused.
Yeah, so if you can find something for the presentation next time, that would be fantastic.
Yep.
Okay, and then the only other question I think is more kind of a fundamental code question. What's the purpose of defining a maximum but then allowing an adjustment? Why not just define the maximum as what we really want the maximum to be?
This is a good question, including for the legislature and all sorts of things, because this discussion of adjustments comes, comes up, and certainly when those, this notion of adjustments, I won't go too far down a rabbit hole, don't worry Miranda, because I've thought too much about this, is that there is that real issue if you, especially if like you write a standard that is an adjustment and there's no standard for that adjustment, then, then it is the maximum, so might as well write it as the maximum, right?
Yeah.
So, the difference being, and really you, the way it needs to be crafted is you have the maximum, the standard maximum, but to get an adjustment, there has to be some rationale for it. Which I, so big picture is important because oftentimes when we're creating these clear and objective, trying to make the process easier, we have to choose a number. And oftentimes, there's nothing super magical about that number besides the fact that it's a number and it's clear and objective. So allowing some flexibility, making that number a little bit more, a broader gray line, if you will, often makes sense, but we still default to what that number is, but then if there's a rationale, well, you know, this provides for better design by offsetting it by another five feet, then it, we want to make that process easy and not, you know, go from a simple administrative review up to a full public hearing by, just by that little, that little change. So, Miranda's thought a lot about this too, so it looks like she has some thoughts.
So a good example of this would be the very first project that we approved in Coffee Creek, the Panatoni Building, where there was a really nice cluster of trees that both the applicant and the city wanted to see preserved. It provides a really nice feature right at the front of their site and has like a seating area now for employees if they're going out there for lunch or on a break or whatever. It's really nice, but that ended up triggering essentially six waivers, because it then meant how do they need to orient the building on an oddly shaped site? So the orientation of the bay doors was different. They still had like the office on the two ends that stuck out to create a better frontage, but then it also triggered things like the canopy height and some other design element that had to shift down because they wanted it to look like it was seamless as opposed to having it be really off in terms of how that kind of middle of the building oriented with the office, the ends that were office spaces. So from a design perspective, it was a much better product, but it triggered like six waivers, but all the waivers were really interrelated. So it went to DRB and it created, again, a longer process for the applicant, and part of the goal of this form-based code was to try to create an administrative path for industrial buildings. And so with things like, okay, we picked a 15-foot canopy height and maybe we would still like to see that, but is 12 really the end-all-be-all when we get a great project at the end of it? So it's essentially creating these kind of almost like buffers around the number we want, where the adjustment could go up or down a little bit, whichever direction we think is better, or whether it's applying to the minimum or the maximum, you know, what, we pick these adjustments because we feel like, okay, that flexibility in a project that we're seeing a better result in is something that's fine. It's close to the other number, but we want to have there be a reason for it, as opposed to saying, oh yeah, we'll just give you those six things from the beginning, then there was never that discussion about like how we got there, or it allowed things that maybe we wouldn't want to see on every single project site, but was okay on this one because of the trees and because of the better site orientation. So it's that situation where you have the one standard because that's what we want to see, and as long as that can work on a site, that's what we're gonna, that's what the code is gonna require, that's the clear and objective standard. But adjustments are giving essentially the planning director some wiggle room when site conditions make that project difficult to meet the clear and objective standards, and that if it can be justified, those adjustments can be given without having to go the full route of a public hearing process.
Okay. I guess the one thing then that I would ask staff to do is, is to look at each of these and make sure that if there's an adjustment allowed, that there's a clear reason for what triggers that adjustment to be acceptable, because if there's not, then we might as well just change it to this is the actual maximum, or change the language to say that this is our recommended, but this is the maximum, because it's not a maximum if there's an allowance to adjust it later. Other than that, I am happy with the modification. Oh, Commissioner Carr.
So is the adjustment both positive and minus, or is it only down? So can it really go from 12 to 18 feet? Or is it 15 is the max, 13 and a half down to 12?
Go ahead Cindy.
It's 15 feet minimum.
Right.
So this, this adjustment would be down. If it were one where it's like 40 feet maximum, then you would think it would go up if they're using the adjustment. Yeah.
The solid, it depends.
I have a question. Follow-up on what you were asking staff to do. Do you want the write-up to show under what conditions you would look at altering the standard? I wasn't sure what you were asking.
Oh yeah, so I would say that the code needs to be clear if, if there is a maximum and a variance allowed, what the rationale is for the variance, what triggers the variance to be something acceptable to be done.
I think the reason why that caught in the gears in my head is that the whole purpose is to provide flexibility, and if you limit your flexibility to only these flexibilities, then you're reducing the flexibility. And unless somebody can come up with those specific kinds of things that staff can dream of, they won't be able to justify it. The whole idea is you look at a site and we have a million different circumstances, and some site results in a much better design based on the judgment of the staff if they allow, within this context, justification. And then that's a specific justification, is a clump of trees.
Yeah.
To list all of the possibilities is really impossible.
Yeah, and I, if I may, I don't imagine listing all the possibilities. I think it'd be similar to our waiver criteria, which are pretty wide open, and from those that have had DRB experience, sometimes it's hard to get an applicant just to like give us like, yeah, I want it, right? That's not good enough. They have to have some reasonable statement of why they want it based on the purpose of the code or the purpose of our, our plan development standards that, you know, takes advantage of improvement of technology, makes a better site plan, some sort of statement like that. I wouldn't imagine it'd be a list that, you know, you qualify if you have this material of window or something, right? So.
I would, I would mention that right now, there is, there are criteria within the code that point you back to, in order to get the adjustment, you have to show how you're meeting the intent of that standard originally, within the form-based code. And so I don't know if Cindy wants to talk about that at all, in particular related to examples of projects that you've worked on with them, but there is that requirement. So for example, on one of them, here I go, here, do you want to talk about the parking at Black Creek? I don't need to do all the talking. And the landscaping.
I'm not sure exactly where you were going with that.
Well, okay, just that there, because of on that, for that project site, where they needed to put the parking, they wanted to essentially put additional parking on the frontage of their addressing street on Garden Acres Road more than the minimum. And it's not a lot more. I can't remember how many spaces more, maybe 10, 15.
Yeah, there were quite a few.
Maybe more than I remember.
They were putting most of their parking.
But they don't have a lot of parking. It's not like a sea of parking, but it is more than what we allow. And so they had to go through the hearings process, they had to get a waiver for that, and that's probably still going to be the process, but essentially the, in order to get that, they still had to meet the intent, which was to not have a sea of parking out front, to have, you know, not that much depth before you get to the building, to have it oriented in a certain way. And then because of that waiver, the requirement then was for them to do additional landscaping and screening, and we kind of worked with them on where the location of the sign would be and all of those things in order to diminish that, that view that could be there if those things weren't in place, and to still meet the intent of the form-based code. I don't think we're changing that standard or recommending to change that standard, but that's an example of how, like, we have a marker back to the design standards and handbook of the form-based code that gives us some criteria for how to evaluate these.
Can you explain the staff's justification for that specific case, right? So that's documented. And that gets, I think, to what you're looking for. In other words, it's not wishy-washy, willy-nilly. This is why this is a public good, or that we have addressed the negative impacts in this way, because otherwise you're setting a precedent by waiving some rule without really justifying it properly, and the next guy comes and says, hey, you know, you did it for that, I wanted to. And the answer is unless you have 200-year-old clump of trees, no, you don't get it.
Yeah, yeah, I, I think Miranda, it was helpful to know that there is, is something in the code somewhere that says, hey, here's how you get to, you know, the, the maximum adjustment. I'm good with that.
And I, I will say too that we put a lot of thought into, you know, what, what modifications do we want, you know, do we want to recommend without losing sight of the intent of, of the code, you know, of the form-based code and, and the waiver process and having those two, two tracks? You know, based on the discussions that I had with former applicants, I mean, there was a lot more that they would like to see changed in here, but, but as we were going through it, we were thinking about, well, you know, what things can we, can we tweak? You know, for instance, like if there's a secondary driveway and having a wider width on that secondary driveway, but keeping the primary driveway at that, that narrow width to make it, you know, reduce hopefully the number of waivers that people, that applicants will have to ask for, but not going so far as to make it too easy, you know, to, to adjust things enough so that hopefully when future projects come in, they'll be able to work within the, the modified standards and not have to, to go the waiver route. But if you, if you have a project that, you know, has retaining walls that are 18 feet tall or that, you know, just have, have all of these, you know, they want to make the maximum use of the site, so they want to put all this parking along the addressing street, well then you're gonna have to get a waiver for that. You know, we, we don't want to go so far as to, you know, remove the need for a waiver and then possibly lose sight of what was it that we wanted to see develop out there. So, and keep the public realm as a primary objective.
Well, I want to thank you for the way you went about explaining this, because it's very easy for these rules and codes and so forth to become just bureaucratic number without any reference to the public good that it's supposed to be coming from enforcing these. And explaining that and educating whoever is hearing it is an important part of your work, and you did that excellently in the way you outlined this. Thank you for that.
Thank you.
Great.
Thank you very much. Appreciate it.
Thank you.
Good job getting us back on track too.
Yeah.
All right, now moving on to getting us off track, Mr. Polly. Frog pond east and south.
Well, seeing that the original plan was to adopt these like about a year ago, but it's been a good year. We, I think we're making some good progress and figuring out some key, key items, as, I mean, this is a, a novel approach, and so the additional thought has been beneficial. So we're back to talk about Frog Pond Development Code. And specifically tonight, we're going to start with discussion of development standards, citing and design standards, things like setbacks and things like that, and lot size. Then we'll come back to something we've talked about a number of times, but update you on housing variety standards and where those are and get your feedback on that. And then, time allowing, we will hit a couple of things that I believe are fairly straightforward to get your feedback on. So let's jump into development standards. So here's the table, I'll walk you through this table. I don't expect you to squint and look at it here, but just kind of see how it lay out in the actual code text. And the things that are in it, we're talking about lot size, lot width, height, distance between buildings, things like that. So let me step you through each of the columns on these. So first of all, in the first column is the land use map designation, so these are the urban form 1, 2, 3 that we've talked about. And this is important to include as many of the standards will vary between the different urban forms, because these are many of the standards, these standards are some of the critical things that really create that differentiation or that transect between the different urban forms. Next is, is minimum lot size, which you'll see in virtually any residential code, particularly ones where you have detached homes, you're gonna have a minimum lot size. We really try to look through and justify a reason for having minimum lot size out here, and we're at a loss to justify having that minimum lot size. I would say the best way to say it, and we can state this in a kind of, on one hand goes without saying, because we do have code language elsewhere in our land division standards that say you can't create an unusable lot, more or less, but so I, I think it behooves us here to restate that, you know, there's no minimum lot size per se recommended, but it needs to be sufficient size that you can actually put a dwelling unit on it. You know, no world's smallest park type things. So why no lot size? So oftentimes, historically speaking, lot size is tied to maximum density, because, right, if you, it's the math, you can put so many lots of that size on a certain acreage, then that's your density. There is no maximum density here for reasons that we've discussed before, so that's a good reason. I mean, so that rationale for having lot size isn't there. So that's a good reason. I mean, so that rationale for having lot size isn't there. The next one is to limit barriers to smaller homes. This one's substantial. We've heard from both the commission and council and the community that a desire for smaller homes to meet demographic and more attainable demographic trends and household trends as well as more attainable price point. And where you force an individual home to be on a lot of certain size, you're going to drive the developer to maximize use of that lot. So they're going to choose a house plan generally that's going to maximize the use of that lot. But then if you're flexible on how big that lot and build that lot around the dwelling instead, rather than, then you can have more flexibility and actually put a smaller house and have a lot size that fits that smaller house. Also, there's overlapping standards. So a lot of those things about traditionally, we think of lot size being used for like, you know, making sure there's some rear yard and a front yard and side yards and some space between buildings. We can accomplish using things like setbacks and lot size or floor to area ratio. So really, there's no rationale to use lot size on top of that. And as we've experienced over the years, oftentimes, if you do have those overlapping standards, you end up needing to request waivers of one or more of them because they don't always align well mathematically. I really, a good way to think about it is having, because this is about housing, right? This is, this is a plan about creating housing. This isn't a plan about creating lots. And so really have lots designed to the home rather than homes designed to the lot, I think is an important principle that we're trying to get to out here. And something we've experienced in Frog Pond West and we'd anticipate continue is middle housing land divisions, which have a great purpose. If you have a cottage cluster or an ADU, that gives a flexibility to sell it separately. But if you have a minimum lot size and middle housing land divisions, and to some extent, and what we've seen in Frog Pond West is you create two smaller units on the larger lot and you end up with these quasi, quasi lots, which don't have, which limit what the owner can do on that lot in the future and creates more process for really the sake of process. And so if we're going to, so there's some thought that if we're going to end up with these separate units of land, let's all do it as one simple process as part of the original subdivision rather than do these subsequent things where they're not really necessary. I alluded to waivers before. We've often seen throughout the years where if you have, if you have a home often, because it used to be we had average lot size in our code for the plan development and some of you that may be reaching way back to your DRB days may, I don't know if any of you ever reviewed a subdivision where we really struggled with that and tried to make that mesh up with the, with the open space requirements and all the other requirements. So there's been a lot of waivers on lot size over the years just because we've realized, well, if we're going to meet all these other requirements, like the, meet the density range, create the open space, then we have to let something give. And oftentimes, that has been lot size. So we can come back to lots. Actually, that one's a pretty big, so I have discussion later, but it's probably, this is a big enough one that I would recommend we pause now and just discuss this particular topic and thoughts you have on it. Or if you see any reason to keep, potentially keep some level of minimum lot size.
So is this just applying to Frog Pond East and South, not citywide? Or is it citywide?
This proposal is just for Frog Pond East and South, right? I could see a world where, okay, this is working well out here, like subsequent couple years down the, few years when we're looking at next round of residential code changes. It may be a discussion topic, but I don't know that at this point. But this particular proposal is just for Frog Pond East and South.
And I like the way you said, build the lot to fill the home, not the other way around. I think that's a good way to explain the need to not have the minimum. It's like, okay, here's the homes that we're going to build. Now let's make the lots fit the home. But that's an effective way to explain it. I like it.
Two thumbs up. Next.
Okay. And I imagine our development partners here, I mean, they've worked with lot size for many decades and they may have some thoughts about, about it too. That, so they're welcome to share their insight, of course, on, on that as well. So moving on to the next column is minimal lot width. And this one, my view on this, we need something because we don't want a lot with no frontage per se. But the intent here is to have it low enough where virtually all lots will be well in excess of these lot widths. But we want something there just to make sure there's some width, there's some, there's some frontage. But the intent is it not to be an amount that would actually create a barrier to development or development of small homes. Height, I thought I, the version I had deleted a thought here, but it's not, so I'll clarify here. So same as, so generally, what we have listed here is what's worked in other Wilsonville zones, didn't at time of publication see real reason to shift that. There's also rules about how much a city can, can limit the number of stories of a home. This says state rules require allowance of three-story middle housing. Let me clarify that. That's only if you actually require parking. You can limit it to two stories if you're not requiring parking, which would be the case here. So there is a potential, as we continue to refine this, that we'll adjust this down, down in maybe like urban form three potentially. I mean, I don't know the answer to that now. So that's not entirely accurate, I'll just say on the record. And also, we're still looking at this 35-foot height, I would say is based on kind of an old traditional 10-foot story and kind of the development patterns now, you tend to see slightly higher ceiling heights, you know, in a new house than maybe you saw in your 70s ranch. So we want to make sure and we're continuing to work with the development community to say, if we're allowing three heights, does that need to be 40 feet to really accommodate kind of modern design and that they may want to do? So the idea is to, is to...
That adjustment thing that you did on the other one?
We'd be here until midnight if I started into residential adjustments, so that may come down the road. I'll just leave it at that for now. But we want to be thoughtful about that and make sure, kind of the intent, and as we talked about, as we talked even through the master planning phase of these different urban forms, is urban form type 1, we want to allow, be generally three, but would allow for four-story. Urban form 2, we're looking at maximum three-story. So, and then urban form type 3, really looking at maximum of a two-story. That's what the precedents that have been shared, both in master planning and as we developed a code around these different urban forms. So probably come back and refresh that and update that with you in the future, but that is the intent there.
I have one question.
Yeah.
So along the commercial area, it's going to go beyond, is the three floors just contained to the residential portion of that? Because we've talked about that
Yeah.
building area being four floors.
Sure. So this table doesn't refer to the, to the Brisbane Main Street.
Got it.
It has its own standards that would allow for
Thank you.
that height. Front setbacks was an interesting discussion. So typically, this is based on, you know, you'd think it'd be based on the urban form type or some sort of zoning. We really want to base it on street fronts where, so you're able to have a uniform setback on a given street. Because oftentimes, those main streets are going to be the boundaries between urban forms and sub-districts, right? So we didn't want this hodgepodge look. And so we think having it more uniform on a street also helps something that comes from the master plan of smoothing that transition between different urban forms. So recommending a table that simply says where it's primarily urban streets that are surrounded by urban form 1 generally, is the front setback similar to the Villebaugh Village Centre is as needed for utilities. So, you know, you're not going to have the setback in the public utility easement, but whatever. But right behind that public utility easement would be the build 2 line. And you don't want them for, you know, huge differentiation. So we would put a max, a front max is 10 feet. But how that also relates is that means you're not going to be having front parking if you have a max of 10 feet. And more of the areas that are dominated and primarily urban form 2, looking at, or in urban form 2 and 3, kind of the default minimum that generally developers will probably come up to, as long as there's not front parking, is 10 feet. You do allow up to 25 feet in urban form 2 areas, but then there'd be no maximum for urban form type 3. But again, the idea is you have consistency on the street. Another new standard that we don't find in other zones is maximum building width. This is also a key differentiator between different urban forms where essentially urban form 1 with that urban look and feel, you could have a block-length apartment building or, or a townhouse building similar to what you may see in the Villebaugh Village Centre where you have some block-length buildings there. But then when you get into the other urban form types, you're not going to have those block-length buildings. So you're going to have the block broken up with, with space between buildings. We're looking, and again, these numbers are based on precedents, but we're still refining and testing them, so they may vary some in the final adopted version. We're also looking at some instances where maybe some enhanced, enhanced vertical offsets in the building and design may create the same effect of breaking up the buildings. And we even see that for some of the precedents where, I know one precedent image in your pocket where it's essentially looks like two small buildings, but they're two-story buildings, but there is an actual connecting stairway in between that really you hardly notice from the street. But this one's important. It's new, but it, again, it's a key differentiator between the different urban forms. And these are really the precedents that we're basing the maximum on, just kind of, if you think of the Villebaugh context, which again is really helpful for us to, because most of us are familiar with Villebaugh and can kind of visualize. So urban form type 1, kind of the maximum would be that block-length apartment building you may see in the Village Centre. Urban form 2 is a seven, would be like a seven-unit townhouse, which is still a pretty large building. An urban form type 3 would be looking like a five-unit townhouse as the maximum. Rear setbacks are based generally on the Villebaugh and Frog Pond West standards. So some things that have worked well. That includes our garage setbacks where either you have between 3 and 5 feet if you don't have a parking space, or if you do have a parking space, it needs to be at least 18 feet. So you can, you know, no in-between stuff where you have your vehicles sticking halfway into the alley. So side setbacks, again, roughly based on Villebaugh and Frog Pond West standards. There is some interest, particularly on council, of making sure these function well. And so that's something we're getting into a lot of detail on that we'll come back with more detail on that in a future work session. I didn't want to go too far down that. But really, making sure that maintenance works, that they're functional, that they're just not wasted space. And are there circumstances, questions come up, are there circumstances where we don't want fences, yet, yet we don't want to over-regulate where people are going to put up fences anyway and have enforcement issues? So any insights, I welcome any insights either in this meeting or, or one-on-one of your experience in the community, seeing these smaller side yards, you know, we're talking probably less than 10 feet, particularly those that are around, you know, that are maybe three feet where you have like six feet, six to five feet between buildings, and how to make those functional and, and not be, not develop nuisance situations. And finally, maximum floor to area ratio, which is really something that functions similar to, to lot coverage. And honestly, we may, in the end, go back to lot coverage, but really, we're looking at FAR as a good tool here because it both introduces some flexibility and more flexibility for development, particularly if you're adding like additional units on, on a site. But also introduces that relationship with, with building height where especially at a lower, in like urban form 3, you're, you're going to end up encouraging those smaller buildings that are closer to the precedent, even if a higher building height is allowed. So these are the draft floor to area ratio. So the difference is, let me step back here, lot, lot size, lot coverage is pretty straightforward. It's like the footprint of the house based on, as a ratio, as a percentage of the total lot area. Floor to area ratio takes into consideration if it's multiple stories. So it actually looks at the habitable, I got it. Floor area versus the lot size. So it introduces that relationship to the height and overall bulk of the building. So you see here are some examples, looking at FAR of 3 in urban form 1, which would again allow four stories at block length as a maximum. In urban form 2, a 1.8, so almost half, which you're looking at more 60% lot coverage at three stories maximum, which makes sense for like the townhouse, sort of three-story townhouse that even you'd see in Villebaugh. Then urban form type 3 would be two stories at 45% lot coverage. Example of that would be like a 4,800 square foot, two-story house on 6, on a 6,000 square foot lot as the maximum. So that is everything that I wanted to present today on development standards. So happy to stop there and talk about any of these. Happy to go back to the slides. And again, this is where I wanted to spend most of the time tonight because this is something we haven't really gotten into in much detail yet and are some important components of this implementing code we're working on.
Anyone? Anyone?
I don't have any flags. I mean, I like the general, like, it seems like there's a lot more flexibility that's being given with some of these things. I'm interested to hear more about, yeah, where we go with the side yards. So it sounds like we'll get there. But I don't, I don't have anything immediate.
The only thing on side yards is if you shrink them, you have to make sure the utilities aren't in that side yard. Like, it has to be a passageway. That's about, but otherwise, I'm, I like where this is going. I think the additional flexibility will make it easier on people trying to develop, so.
I think I'm going to hold mine until after I hear from our audience members.
Okay.
I would note for the chair's consideration that Mr. Polly has another...
I would note for the chair's consideration that Mr. Polly has another relatively short, but kind of two or three other segments to this presentation. So I would just note that it would be for you to consider, for the, or commission to consider, how you do want to receive any public comment during this work session and kind of the timing of that. And if you want to do it multiple times, whatever, but that is the discretion of the commission to decide.
Okay. Dan, can you go back to the table? Okay, perfect. Minimum lot width. So you talked about potentially not having it. And then a discussion around making the minimum lot width small enough that it's not impactful to developers or, you know, that it's not going to be an issue. I guess fundamentally, if that's the, if it's scaled down so small, what's the purpose of it to begin with? And I ask that because if you look at urban Form Type 3 and you've got a 5-foot side minimum, which means you've got 10-foot per side, which means your minimum house width would be 5 feet on a minimum 15-foot lot width, that doesn't seem very practical. And so I just asked the question, do we just get rid of it entirely and stay with the side minimums?
Yeah, it may take some more looking. I mean, because in reality, you'd be looking at, I mean, even if you have a skinny house where it just is wide enough to, for a garage, for a tiny garage, you're looking at, I mean, extreme would be 10. But no one's going to build 10-foot wide houses. Be more like, probably like 15, 16 feet. So then you add that. So yeah, you're going to have like 30-foot width. However, note that this also applies to townhouses, which can be a lot narrower. So, yeah, it's, it's a good question whether or not it has it. I mean, these are really allow for, in a townhouse situation where you'd actually have a garage. And vehicle access to a lot essentially is all it's guaranteeing, not much else.
But if you have a townhouse with a garage, you need a given width regardless. I mean...
Yeah, so I mean, so the thought really is that the vehicular access, having it wide, that wide is really the, the key rationale. But we can continue to explore if it's really, because oftentimes lot width is, is tied to lot size. And when you're talking about larger buildings, your minimum lot building width is really going to drive lot width as well.
Yeah.
It's, the other really rationale is kind of the discomfort is what are we not thinking of that some crazy thing that someone might come up with to really, that it needs to be more than like one little, one-foot frontage, that you need some meaningful frontage on a street. And that's really what it, what it's getting to.
Okay. Well, maybe think about what options there might be out there.
Yeah.
Yeah. Ms. Bates, do you have something you'd like to say?
I don't need to.
Your number two was up on my...
Oh, it was still on. Oh, I don't know what I did. I have no idea how I did that.
I'll fix that.
[laughing]
Okay, thank you.
Oh, maybe that's it. I would say though, that it does allow, you know, flexibility when we're thinking about standard housing types, that maybe that frontage is fairly narrow. But if there are places within the area where ADUs are being developed and/or partitioned, or small units, it's, you know, requiring, every time we require something larger and bigger, it's forcing a larger and bigger housing type. And so I don't know that these numbers are honed in yet either. And I think it's a good, great question about if it's so low, then is it needed? Again, kind of to minimum lot size questioning. So I definitely think it's one that we can look at and talk about more and see if we do think it's needed and if these are the right numbers.
What else do you have? Do you think this would be a good stopping point for public comments? Or do you want to get through?
No, I think that, I think it makes sense we could divide it because it, they're really, while they're certainly interrelated, that kind of the, the body of comments are different.
Okay. All right. Well, so it looks like first up, Mimi Dukas, welcome back. If you would like to come forward and state your name and address and let us know what you think.
No spiders. Happy holidays, everybody. So we are now diving into the nitty-gritties of how this is all going to work. The rubber's really hitting the road. We've been spending a lot of time with staff, talking through these details and how they're going to work. Obviously, very specific to the West Hills site. My name is Mimi Dukas. I'm with AKS Engineering here on behalf of West Hills. So the exhibit that I'm handing out shows our latest site plan. It's changed a little bit since the last time you saw it, particularly around the park area. In talking with staff, it was important to have a view, vista into the park along 60th Avenue as you travel north. So the park got tweaked a little bit. And I think this matches what, what was envisioned in the master plan, but also still maximizes how the park relates to the BPA corridor. So that can really be a continuous amenity. That's the primary site plan change. But what I want to show you on this exhibit is we've overlaid the urban form districts. So you can see how that mapping relates to our actual site plan. So the, the brownish color in the middle, that is urban Form 1. The orange color is urban Form 2. And the yellow is urban Form 3. So you can now take that draft standards table and look at how the housing types relate to it. Staff has already made a few changes that we've talked about or identified. One of the areas that we still need to work through, and I think there's a lot of ways to achieve it, in the urban Form 1, or in urban Form 2, excuse me, the maximum building length facing a street is currently shown as 120 feet. Those apartment buildings on Stafford are about 180 feet deep. And we still think that that's the right urban form. The length of those buildings allows for essentially an eight-unit floor plate with two sets of stairways. So there's a reason the dimension is what it is. I don't think you necessarily want to have that standard across all of urban Form 2. I think it's very specific to Stafford. So we'll work with staff on, on some potential solutions to that and see if we can find a way to resolve that one. The other thing I wanted to talk about was the maximum building height. The homes, the townhomes that we have shown along the Brisbane Street extension, those are envisioned to be three-story townhomes. The 35-foot height is a little snug to be able to do that, 35 feet. Depending on topography, depending on the roof form, it is measured to the midpoint of the roof. So it would be a little more comfortable if that was 40 feet or somewhere between 35 and 40 feet. So that would be helpful, specific to urban Form 1, to get just a little bit more relief on the height. And there's not, the, the number of stories in buildings is not specified in the code table, but it is in the descriptions of urban Forms 1, 2, and 3. And for urban Form 3, the yellow district, it's described as, as two-story maximum. I believe that's intended to be at the street. We have a unique situation in this site that there's an area that really needs to be served by a sanitary sewer, private pump station, just based on elevations of sanitary sewer and things like that. So in order to develop that land, a private pump station is really the way to go. And multifamily is the type of housing that's permitted with that. So we would prefer that those be three-story. We can work on some site planning. There's some flexibility for site planning for how we relate those multifamily to Advance Road. But we'll, that's something that we're still working through. I just want to have it on your radar as something we need to kind of wrap our heads around. And then we are still trying to run some calculations for FAR standards. The FAR for urban Form 3 is, it, it feels too low for the for-sale homes. I think we could probably make it work for the multifamily, depending on how that site planning works out. But for continuity of housing type, we're, I think we're struggling a bit on what that FAR is. I think from a policy, policy perspective, there's, it's worth considering exempting ADUs from the FAR calculation. I think it might help incentivize the ADUs.
They are exempt.
They are exempt?
Yeah.
So they come out of the calculation?
Mm-hmm.
Okay, great, great. Okay. Step ahead of me.
That's, that's in the rule, rules too, so.
Okay. Side yard setbacks, we can talk about a little bit later. I think the way the code's currently drawn up works pretty well for the detached homes with the shared use easement. We're talking with staff about what that means for attached homes. So we'll save that for a future conversation, but that's, that's one of the topics that we're kind of canoodling on. Other than that, I think we're headed in a pretty good direction. Dan wants to talk a bit about mobility units, but I think that's what I've got for today. Do you have any questions for us?
If I may.
Go for it.
If, I have a question for both Mimi and Mr. Polly, or Ms. Dukas and...
You can call me Mimi, that's okay.
Is, if, Dan, what is the, since we didn't talk about it tonight, what is the height of the mixed-use buildings on Brisbane? And while you think about that, the proposed or designed buildings, do you know the height that you're anticipating for those?
I don't know the exact height. We are anticipating four stories. And I don't know the roof form. So that's the mixed-use zone. So we weren't diving into that too deep.
I'm thinking it's 40, 40-plus.
Yeah, I was just, so I was just, as we talk about building height and thinking about the different urban form types and the transitions there, I was just, are you thinking like 40 to 50 feet?
Mm-hmm.
Okay.
Because those floor plates are higher.
Yeah, maybe even higher. Do you think it could go as high as 60?
I would be surprised.
Okay, that's...
Again, we're, we're still kind of...
Yeah, of course.
But I'd be surprised.
Of course. Thank you.
Yeah. Any other questions? Okay, thank you.
Wait.
Okay.
Mr. Polly, you didn't actually answer my question. Did it say, or does it just say four stories?
It says, I don't remember.
You don't remember. Okay, I'll try to look it up.
One thing you spoke to, but is not in your tables, is that the front setbacks for a particular block with urban form have to be this, they have to be uniform? Did I hear that correctly? And is that something that the builder wants to land on, or?
The setbacks for...
Yes.
Yeah, so on Brisbane Street, yeah, if, yeah, we can look at letting that go all the way through.
So I was concerned about the setback on Brisbane, but if you go to another table, it says the setbacks on specific streets. And it says Brisbane is the PUE or a max of 10. So I think it supersedes the table. We just need to have it go to 59th Street instead of just to 60th Street.
Yeah, that makes sense.
So I think if we, if we make that one tweak, we're there.
Okay. My, one of the things I was thinking of is we, we had talked about previously how much we want, I call it relief. You know, we've got variety in the, in the facades. And then if we, if we say that that, that setback has to be uniform, does that fly against our desire to have those variations?
I actually don't, because you'll have slight variation.
Mm-hmm.
But, so too much variation, it looks hodgepodgey, too hodgepodgey. And so you'll have some variation, right? I mean, you'll have it between like 5 to 10 feet. But also there'll be variety in the architecture and the architectural features and stuff. So you'll end up, I think you'll have the right balance.
Okay.
Because you've got a minimum and maximum. And frankly, a lot of the homes that are in our plan are alley-loaded. So it's really the alley facade that controls. You, you set that at an even 18 feet to allow for that parking. And then the front will vary a little bit depending on the home design.
Okay.
Yeah.
Okay, thank you. So it's not identical then?
Correct.
Gotcha. Okay, thank you.
And then Mimi, just one quick question. Looking at this, it appears that, that right now you guys are, are looking at ADUs only in, only associated with townhomes. Is that correct?
That's the current plan, is the, the, West Hills has a, a housing type that is a front-loaded townhome. And in that situation, there's a good way to tuck that ADU in on the end units, because the end units are a little bit bigger. So that's, that's a housing type that's worked for them. So that's a way to accommodate it. With the housing variety standards and, and the other matrices that go into this, those ADUs help us check a few boxes. Because they're small units, they're single-level living, they're mobility-friendly. So by, by scattering the ADUs through their, through both the, the middle urban planning district E5 and E6, we're able to check those housing variety boxes in those districts. And then we've got multifamily in the, in the E4.
Yeah, okay. Thank you.
I have a question about the ADUs too. That, that doesn't...
It's on, closer to the mic.
Oh, I'm sorry. In that ADU site, it doesn't seem like there is nearly enough parking for anybody in there. Where would they park?
I'm going to let Mr. Grinberg answer that question. He knows the, the housing footprints better than I do. There is on-street parking throughout the, throughout the district. And with the alley-loaded homes, that leaves a lot of room on the street for on-street parking. It's not broken up by the garages. But as far as the on-site parking, I'll have Dan answer that one.
All right.
Anything else for me?
I think we're good. Thank you.
Thank you.
All right. Mr. Grinberg, would you like to come forward, state your name and address, and fire away?
Dan Grinberg, West Hills Land Development, 3330 Northwest Yon Avenue, Portland, Oregon. So appreciate your time this evening. And we are working diligently with staff on coming up and having robust discussions on what works and what doesn't. And we appear, we don't want to miss a meeting because this is really important, because this means whether the plan works or it doesn't. I mean, we've all spent a lot of time, but this is when it's either happening or it's not feasible. And so we get very concerned. There's some issues being discussed tonight that we haven't had a chance to discuss with staff. So we see tables of numbers with minimums, maximums, and it's like, some work, some don't. And I get very concerned because when we discuss some of these issues, one of the answers is, our planning commission, this is what they're looking for. Well, we didn't get a chance to talk about it. So it's not a criticism of anyone. It's just the way the process works. And, you know, people don't have time for a meeting before the planning commission meeting. And so here we are. So it's kind of like, here we go. So one of the issues that came up, first of all, we're very much in favor of flexibility. We know there need to be standards, but things change, markets change. And that's part of our business is we need to respond to the market. We don't create the market. We wish we did. But we respond to the market and what people are looking for in homes and affordability and all of those kinds of issues. the maximum building length on some of the apartment units. And Dan mentioned briefly, but to reduce the length of a building, just to reduce the length for appearance, we believe that that can be managed better with articulation. And I think early on in this process, we showed you some examples of buildings that had a lot of articulation, and I think you were very favorable about those types of buildings. I mean, they're very broken up, there's different materials, windows, articulation of the building, and it's, the building length is not nearly as important as articulation to break it up. So I would just ask that you don't lock on to 120-foot building length. Be open for just some, some discussion. We'll have some examples for you to consider. Another issue that we have is, and I think you may be going to discuss this in a few minutes, but is on the accessible units. There's the partial and there's the full. And as I understand it, the partial mobility accessible units are a requirement for a living room, bedroom, kitchen, and bathroom on the main floor. Well, when we're doing, building small lots and small homes, you've got a limited footprint, and by having those requirements, it really limits what we can do with a home. We might be able to check all the boxes, it might end up a terrible floor plan and nobody wants to buy it. So we're very concerned about that, and so please allow for some further discussion on that. We have some real concerns. We would be happy to offer the plan, we just don't, what these tables show is there's minimum accessible units. And it's like, that's a large portion of our single-family homes, and if there's no market for it because of the footprint, that's a problem. It makes the project not feasible. So we're all for providing options for housing for all, but it's got to be, you know, if we do a pre-sale, somebody says they want that one, we have no problem with that, but to require minimums, we would find a, a problem. So we, thank you for your consideration.
And if you have a question about the parking on the neighborhood?
Parking on an ADU, yes, it's a, it's additional dwelling unit for the lot, right? And so the parking would be on the street. That's very typical. There's no room for parking on the lot. It's, because of its small, smaller size typically, and in our case, it would be, it's less vehicles, less people, and parking on the street. Like Mimi said, we have, most of our units are alley-loaded, which is a very attractive street scene. And so the, the parking is behind the unit, but it also leaves an open curb line. There's no driveway cuts, which limit the parking on the street. So there should be adequate parking on the street for those types of units. And on small lots, it was mentioned, why are the ADUs with the townhomes? On small lots, there really is no room for ADUs. There are not room for a separate structure. That would typically be in a larger lot situation, where you'd put it in the backyard, and that's just not the situation we have here. What we're trying to do is provide smaller, more affordable homes typically, in this particular neighborhood.
What is the width of the lot for these ADUs? Like, can a car park in front of some of these?
A townhome would be typically, I mean, we haven't designed it to the, the final design, but probably 20 feet wide. And then you have the corners, and I mean, there's, there's a lot of parking. And again, say that we would typically do a three or fourplex in a townhome building, and so you have, you know, 80 feet of parking, and the ADUs are just on the ends. That's not in the interior units.
Oh, no, Chair, we do have another audience member. Al, did you want to say anything?
No.
Okay.
Thank you.
All right, I don't want to go too much longer tonight, but I think, at least briefly, if we can jump into the, the housing variety stuff, then I'll probably leave the other two till another time. But... So we've talked about housing variety, and really tonight, I wanted to give you an update and how we've been trying to simplify the presentation and really make it so it functions well in practice, as, as our various planners are working with design teams and applicants to, to implement these. Something else, as you look at this table, that's not entirely clear on this slide, but I want to make it clear on the record, and I'll find the way to make it most clear in the code, is you can double count. So for example, if you have, if you have a mobility-ready townhouse that's less than 1,500 square feet, it can check all the boxes. So these aren't necessarily different silos. So I want, so similar to what I did, I just want to walk you through this table and kind of explain what's here and what it means. First of all, is, the standards are expressed for the smaller of a sub-district or existing tax lot. And then, in the case where you do have the separate tax lots, if for some reason, which we'd hope that a developer does end up developing more than the one tax lot within the sub-district, then you can put together those requirements for those separate tax lots, as long as they're kept within the sub-district. So really, and there's a balance, because it encourages lot consolidation, as do many of our standards throughout our residential standards in the city, but at the same time, it keeps those standards within the sub-district, was, which was, is important to keeping the ideas of variety throughout, as well as kind of similar to variety on the block level throughout the ma, throughout the master plan area. In the table, we also put the minimum total number of units. You know, this, this is related to the variety standards, but it's not necessarily directly the variety standards, but it's a convenient place to put the number. And just for reference, we're, as a minimum, it's 1,325 units in the master plan area. We expect a build-out that'll end up being somewhere, somewhat more than that, but that is the absolute minimum. So something that's updated, in prior tables, when we were looking at this, we had, you know, you, you can have category A, B, and this type of category C, and it became very, I think, overconfusing to be referencing all the categories. As we came back to it, while that, while we're keeping kind of in, in, in practice that idea of categories, we don't necessarily need to lay out the categories on a table, in a separate table to really get to implementation of the different categories of unit types. So that said, we just call it what it is on the table now, right? This is the minimum number of middle housing units, rather than the, middle, minimum number of category B, right? So, and really what this represents numeric, the other choice that we're recommending is rather than sending applicants off to do math, using some formula in the code, of actually giving the answer in the code of, this is, this is the minimum number of housing units of, of this, of, of this target housing type. I ended up not putting it in this presentation, it's in your pocket. I do want to mention that we did also, the big concern doing that is what if our net area ends up being less than we thought it was? What if, you know, we find a wetland we weren't aware of, or something like that, or, you know, the road ends up being a lot, we have to make this road curvilinear for some reason, it takes up a lot more of our, of our smaller lot than we thought. There, the code will have a formula that says, if you're, so if you're less than a certain percent, which is 75%, let me step back here. So in coming up with these numbers, we made some assumptions about what percent of the gross area is the net area. So taking out things like roads and stormwater, stormwater ponds and things like that. So we made those assumptions to come up with these numbers, but if for some reason that, the net area is less than 75%, then there will be formulas in the code to go, that applicant can elect to use, they're not forced to use, in order to actually adjust these, these standards. So that said, it's really the idea that we're aiming for is 20% of the most likely kind of moderate build-out, which is actually 30% of the minimum, as middle housing units. Middle housing is as defined in the current code from the work this commission did, as well as others, within the last couple of years with the middle housing project. And the big number in terms of meeting, meeting our policy goals is we end up with approximately 360 of minimum middle housing units in the master plan area. In reality, I think we'll actually be more than that, because I think the townhouse product in, in particular, will be fairly popular, and there'll be momentum for that out here. So they'll probably be well in excess of, of the 360, but as adopted, we'd be guaranteeing at least 360 middle housing units in front, east and south. The next one is number of small units. So this is what previously we're, we're explaining as cottages, ADUs, but also as we continue to think about it, an elevator-served apartment serves a lot of the same standards, or small apartment units, also meet kind of that, that mark, a lot of the same market segment. So it's defined as any unit 1,500 square feet or less counts. And there's a table that kind of gets into more detail, especially for multifamily, of, you know, when do you count, what type of unit is what, to make that entirely clear. So we listed, these end up being fairly small numbers, relatively speaking, which staff recommends is appropriate, because again, you don't want to push this so much, you, this, I mean, it's always a balance. You don't want to push it so much that it's kind of contradicting or forcing the market to do something unnatural, but also something that ensures that we do get some. So approximately 90 are required across the master plan area. Again, probably end up fair amount of that, as a whole, more than that as a whole, but at the same time, there's certain areas where you'll probably be about right at the minimum. And finally, you have our mobility-friendly units. So we're looking at 10% of, of units at moderate build-out, are 15% of the minimum. A third of those units must be full mobility-ready, which essentially means they're single-story units that don't require stairs to get into them. So we're looking at, in terms of that number, that would be required of, we're not talking necessarily master on main, but there needs to be some sort of bedroom on the main. Approximately 180 across the master plan area, 60 of which would need to be those full mobility-ready, which typically, those full mobility-ready, you're going to be met by ADUs, elevator-served apartments, and ground-floor apartments. And any cottage clusters would tend to probably meet those as well. So I'll just show you here quickly, I've been referencing this, but we do lay, recommend laying out, replacing the category table with, kind of just laying out different unit types and grouping them. This is multifamily unit types, these are middle housing unit types, then accessory dwelling units, and other detached units. So just providing the clarity that in the future, as we get into, you can have, you have, you can't have more than this many unit types, it's clear in the code what we, what we mean by that. So then we get into the maximum. So something that we've talked about, the maximum again, by category, that we're grouping all of similar units, which does a good job of meeting a lot of the intent and the, the goals of the master plan. However, unit type rather than unit category makes more sense for a couple of reasons, and that's what we're recommending at this point. Because it's more flexibility, but in particular, encourages more variety by encouraging more unit types being used. Because essentially, as, as we looked at the demonstrations, if you go by unit category, each unit category has, has, will have, would have the most common built. So you're talking apartments for middle housing, townhouses, and then you're talking probably ADUs for the small units, as, as well as some ground-floor apartments. And what this allows is if they are maxing out, it actually encourages something like stacked flats, or, or another type of unit middle housing type, or another type, or cottage clusters, or something different. There's more of a motivation to do something different, rather than just kind of the default unit type in that category. Again, it'd be based on the smaller of a sub-district or development area. We do want to be conscious that it's more difficult to meet these standards, the smaller you get, because you have less land to work with. So two acres or less, you don't have to do more than one unit type, right? If you're, if you're looking at that small of a project, you just have to do one unit type from a practicality standpoint. Two to five acres, you're looking at two unit types, and then once you get upwards of five, you're looking at three unit types required. And so when you get to needing more than two, no more than 60% of the land then can be used for one unit type, which is consistent with what we've been talking about for a while now. So I will leave it at that, and let's, I will, I think I'm going to defer the other two topics, so we have time for cookies and things before nine o'clock, but let's, happy to have any discussion about variety standards that you'd like. I hope I'm making some sort of sense, because these are different.
They are different, yeah.
Fine, 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 I'll ask the dumb question. When we look at the diagrams that West Hills has provided both last meeting and then this meeting, how do these compare to the variety standards as you've outlined tonight? Do you know?
I don't think the calculations are here, but I've ran the calculations, and they're, they're close, they're met, or close, or very close. I, you know, they, they can speak for themselves, but my, my calculations have been that it doesn't create a barrier to what they're showing here. Obviously, they've added some from their earlier iterations to meet them, but we're seeing both in what West Hills has been doing, as well as some other demonstrations we're doing, that they're workable at the level that they're proposed at this point. And there has been some tweaks where really, like, for example, in, the, the mixed-use apartments count as a different thing than the standard apartments. And so that, that helps, for example, that sub-district, I'll be forthright, that it helps that sub-district meet the standard, that if you counted all those as apartments, it would not. That sub-district also does, we're still working on the amount of middle housing there. That's, because currently, there's no middle housing in that first sub-district. That is an ongoing And in upcoming work session, we will share some other demonstration plans we've done with another consultant, and kind of see an alternative of how this can lay out.
Okay. Any public comments on any of this discussion topics? Any public comments on any of this discussion topics? Dan, you moved your head the wrong way. Okay. I'm not seeing any questions, Mr. Polly.
What, I guess, one question I have is what more information or discussion would the commission like to see in future work sessions around this? Are we comfortable with it, or do we still need a noodle on it? And what can I prepare to, to help facilitate that?
Well, my feedback is that we don't have the sub-districts memorized like you do. And so I'm constantly flipping back to the sub-district map and reminding, refreshing my memory. So that, that's, that's helpful, and I appreciate that it's in the packet somewhere, though, so I can find it.
I think more noodling time is going to be good. Yeah. What specifically we need? Yeah, I don't know. I'll tell you when we don't see it next time.
I'll work on finding different ways to state the same thing to see if.
Cool. Yeah, and if you can get habitable back in the conversations again, too, that'd be great.
Will do.
I, I appreciate the public comments to know if it's build-able or not. I mean, it's great to come up with standards for standard sake, but if it's not, if it makes projects unbuild-able and untenable, that's helpful for me.
Yeah, especially because this is the largest.
Yeah, I mean, this, this particular one, we have great input, but then, once we get into the smaller.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Are the plan, are the standards going to be applicable in all situations?
And we've been testing it and doing demonstration plans there as well. So, yeah, because, I mean, that is, you know, I joked at the beginning that it's been a year since we thought we were going to, but a lot of that has been testing and demoing this and refining them, which, you know, fortunately, just kind of big picture, we have time to do because there's certain infrastructure that still needs to be built before anything can be built out here. So I think it's benefited the city to take this time to really, you know, think through it. And we still have some time to think through it, to make sure we get this as, as right as we can.
It would be nice if we, this example is great, because we've seen it kind of morph over time as we, as they had tried to fit their development into our standards. But it would be interesting to see what other development plans for other sub-districts would look like if the standards were applied.
And maybe just briefly, before we, we're done, are there any burning comments or questions on the other two items I included in the packet? Is it something that you have enough interest in for me to bring back in the future? Or it is like, okay, yeah, that's nice. I mean, I'll bring it back briefly, but just if there's anything, or.
Well, I just wondered in the, you were defining the, the lot, corner lot, through lot, but it looks like you defined the corner lot twice. Is there a reason why we're?
I think there's an old definition that was crossed out and a new definition.
Well, there's two new sections. There's one in paragraph one, and then there's another one in.
Yeah, I'll have to look at it.
Former paragraph four, now paragraph three.
I'll be, I wrote most of this a long time ago, so.
Just seem.
I'll have to, I, I re-read it.
We should do it all in one paragraph and not define it twice. Because my eyes got crossed when I tried to read.
Corner, so, okay, so yeah, it's on the top of page one.
Yeah, you got 4.001 XXX, first paragraph.
Yeah.
Defines a corner lot, and then the second half of paragraph three also defines a corner lot.
So that paragraph three is really defining what is the front lot line in the case of a corner lot? And the first paragraph is really what the actual lot is. So the first, third paragraph is really talking about how you figure out what the front lot line is, which, trust me from experience, is a much, some, sometimes a much more involved exercise than you would think it would be.
Okay. I'll read it with that intent.
Okay. Anything else? All right, well, thank you for your time tonight.
Thanks, Dan.
Happy to get us off schedule.
All right, moving on, informational items, no staff presentations, Ms. Bateshill, anything?
I do have something this evening from staff communication. I'll make sure I'm close enough. So this will be both my favorite and least favorite part of tonight's agenda. It is an honor to get to say something to and about both of our commissioners this evening, who will be serving their last meeting, ending their terms on the Planning Commission, and sadly, will not be here for another term in the future. Dan had the opportunity to work with Commissioner Neal during her time on DRB, and has requested to be the one to make remarks. But so while I will focus my remarks on Commissioner Mesba, this beginning part really is, is for both of you. And I just want to say a few things about being a volunteer in Wilsonville. Being a volunteer generally, someone is placing the needs of others above their own, and that is exhibiting their strong values of both service and sacrifice. And for that, I thank you both. I thank you for exhibiting that type of leadership and doing that to support me, my team, the city council, and really, the people of Wilsonville. So thank you. An individual's time, I've said this many times to you guys, is a very precious commodity. We all know that in the days that we live. And we all have to decide how we will spend it, who we will spend it with, and what we will be doing. Despite your limited time that you have each and every day, each of you has committed to volunteer on a consistent basis, choosing to show up, give of your time in order to serve the broader good of the community of Wilsonville. And for that, I can't thank you enough. I hope you know that your service has truly been meaningful. You have contributed to significant policies over the past four to eight years, in particular on housing and the adoption of the Town Center Plan, both very monumental and important for the community. These actions will provide needed housing services and opportunities, important opportunities for the people in our community. Cameron, it has been a true pleasure having you on the commission. I feel so grateful that we've had an opportunity to work together over the past eight years, for you to serve as my commissioner on the Town Center Planning Effort, and then obviously here on the Planning Commission. You have a wealth of experience and expertise from your professional career, which has been invaluable to me, to this group, to the council, to the city. You have pushed us to do better, you have challenged us, and for that, we have created better plans and better results in the community. You're committed to what you do and to the city, and you can see a bright vision for us tied to higher values for the future of this place that we work in or live in, or both. You're an avid learner, you're inquisitive, you're a great listener, and these have made you a great fellow commissioner, a great chair, and a great policy advisor to staff. You also are a very kind and funny person, and I've really enjoyed working with you. So I hope we get to continue working together in the future. On behalf of the city of Wilsonville, and especially the Planning Division staff, I would like to express our gratitude to both of you with a small gift, and of course, treats after the meeting.
Thanks, Miranda and Catherine. Really appreciate you stepping up to, to Planning Commission. I remember having those conversations with you. And, you know, how thick are the packets and? But it's like, I, I really appreciate your thoughtfulness and listening. I've observed you be a great listener. I mean, there's been a lot of information to take in, and both during your DRB time and during your service on the Planning Commission, and just patiently listen and being thoughtful in each step of the way, and offering thoughtful insights along the way. I know, as Miranda said, being a volunteer takes time away from a lot of other things. But being consistently here and sharing your time and your, your energy with the city and with your fellow DRB members and commissioners has been greatly appreciated. And we wish you all the best in your next adventures.
I'm chair, so I get to do what I want. So Commissioner Neal, thank you very much for all your service. You've been a great member of the Planning Commission, and it's sad to see you go. But I hope that, I hope for nothing for the best for your next adventures. Commissioner Mesba, you were the only commissioner that was here when I started on Planning Commission. And so I've worked with you the longest out of anybody that I've worked with personally. And it's been amazing to work with you. Every meeting, you always, there's always something that I get from you that just makes me think about something that I didn't think about before. Your, your thoughtfulness, your knowledge, your insightfulness has been invaluable to me as a planning commissioner, and I'm really going to miss you. Thank you for everything you've done for the city.
Thank you all, I'm going to miss this. This is really my love and my passion. And when the opportunity came up, and I interviewed with the prior mayor, he said that normally you start at the DRB, not at the Planning Commission. I said, you know, take it or leave it, this is what I wanted to. So, so this was an exception. And so I think there's a punishment when you're granted an exception. I think, you know, you should watch out, the developers looking for exceptions. There's punishment that comes after that. When, earlier this year, as I knew this would be my last year, I approached Miranda and Chris Damsu and said, "You guys need to tell me where my next stop is going to be." And so I'm going to go to the DRB, that's the punishment. Back, back to the, back to the end of the line. No, actually, I'm looking forward to that as well.
There's more reading.
There is, there's more listening, I think, as well. No, it's, this is, this is great. The honor has been mine, really. And the, the kind of points that I make in support of the staff is mostly because I've been in their seats, and I know how badly it sucks usually. So I'm trying, trying to, to be cognizant of the fact that it was painful when unkind things were said when I was in that position. And not, not to allow that to perpetuate, they're doing an excellent job. And I think the city should be pretty happy with the kind of services getting from the staff, as well as the volunteers. And the volunteers, you know, we couldn't do our job if they didn't do their job. And all the information we keep asking them, and then bugging Dan about how it keeps going on and on and on, because we kept asking questions, is, is what they're supposed to be doing for an informed kind of decision-making. So this has been great, I've loved it, and enjoyed it, and it's been an honor. Thank you.
Staff, anything else?
Yeah, I would just say the other thought I had was, I picked up my binder, so Mandy, of course, helps me keep track of all my, and I picked it up and I went, oh my gosh, it's so heavy. And so if you want to, come and lift it, because you've done eight years of this.
That's what, two months?
I can't remember a year that, I mean, we used to often try to cancel a meeting a year, and I don't think we've done that in about three years. So, and I don't foresee 2024 being a whole lot lighter if you look at the work program. But just exhibit A of how much you've contributed to this city, and you can multiply that by how many years you've been on a committee.
All right, well, looks like we're done. I'm looking for a motion and a second from, from the two people over here, as your last jobs.
I, I move to end this painful part of the commission.
All right, with that, we are adjourned, 8:35 PM. Thank you.